Game that is to destroy you and your future.
Let's be very clear, I ain't here to drink beer, smoke weed, shoot the breeze and break bread with you. I'm only here to resurrect the living dead with you. Thought it was some kind of a game, I'm not playing with you. I got the Moorish warlords with Moroccan sharp swords, Ethiopians with white face camouflage. Already disciplined and ready for that sabotage. You listen to Minaj, word? You should kill yourself and everybody that you came with arrangements. Out of jurisdiction, no arraignment, my name gets mentioned through the ethers, through high frequency speakers. Certified forty-five, get in line, make this revolution right your favorite pastime. Make listening to Koon tune your very last time, last time, he was CO and now he's gangstified. Pushing keys, catching bodies, man, somebody lying. I'd rather listen to that god noise, levitate with flyboys, organize an army, bang dead press. Understand, I'm not a missionary, just the devil's adversary, extraordinary compliment the feds. And most listening are subject to conditioning, they need to hook something snappy just to pull them in. I truly sympathize, I hope this pretty singing satisfies, now should we get back to business then? Separating gods from the nigger men, separating chicken heads from the heroines. They tell me constantly that I should change my content, you're just too conscious, maybe you should narrow in. Rhyme more about that street life heroin, make it amplify, glorify the hell you're in. But where the hell you been? Clearly you don't know me then. Spit flame Ethan RJ, the pink is set it off. I gang bang on opposition till his head is off, his arm leg leg arm nailed to a cross. You're not a mob boss Florentini Machiavelli, close as you are to Italian, it's sauce and spaghetti. The flow is deadly, hip hop jihad mentally, they could tell I was a rebel the moment they met me. Gotta respect me, the eighty fiveers wanna sex me, occupied by the five, still I let them sweat me. You can bet me, Phoenix if they try to debt me, and the Republic of Villas stood ready to wreck me. I pull verses from my screen for the have-nots, who seem caught between the rocks and the hard spots. And most listening are subject to conditioning, they need to hook something snappy just to pull them in. I truly sympathize, I hope this pretty singing satisfies, now should we get back to business then? I'm not the only one can tell that something's going on, we hustle harder every day and barely holding on. These big banks getting breaks that will be gully on, and they'll freeze your assets, keep your scullies on. The same Babylon upgraded red bottom, and he was about that revolution till the feds got him. My man Scott got three to five for a bag of weed, but be a priest and rape boys walk scot-free. I bet you thinking that I'm kidding cuz I'm throwing stones, it isn't me, it's ancient maces in my chromosomes. Impatient ancestors raging through my rib zones, see swallows translated through a microphone. The freedom banger hanger Margaret Sanger, Planned Parenthood and every hood would like to thank her. Bangers Rockefeller, Bilderberg, Unicom, Tupac, IBM, UNICEF and Firecom. My rubber firearm annihilate the infrastructure, come at a lexicon cuz I don't speak the tongue of suckers. I've won degrees of the royal pedigree, I'm leaving me sixteen in my afterbirth. Still, most listening are subject to conditioning, they need to hook something snappy just to pull them in. Just Wes, now Ruby say la.
A, A, avoid negative sources, people, places, things and bad habits. B, believe in yourself. C, consider things from every angle. D, don't give up and don't give in, don't let a damn thing get you down. E, enjoy life today, yesterday is gone and tomorrow never come. F, family and friends are hidden treasures, talk to them and enjoy their riches. G, give more than you plan to give each day. H, hang on to your dreams. I, ignore the bullshit. J, just do it. K, keep on trying no matter how hard it may seem, it will get easier. L, love yourself first and most love God always. M, M. Make it happen. N, never let them see you sweat. O, open your eyes to see everything around you. P, practice make perfect. Q, winners never win and winners never quit. R, relearn, study about everything important in your life. S, stop procrastinating. T, take control of your own destiny. U, understand yourself first so that you can better understand others. V, visualize it. W, want it more than anything. X, you already marked your spot in the world. Y, you are unique, all God's creation, no one can replace you. Z, zero in on your target and go for it!
Not working the way that I wanted it to work. I need to log in through the laptop, not the app, I got the app on the laptop.
Oh, do you?
Yeah, it shit don't work the way that I wanted it to work.
I got the app. Yeah, I gotta zoom down on the laptop.
Yeah. Alright, let me fix this laptop, bro, and then I'll, um... Look like we got, we got some...
Visitors.
Yeah, we got company.
Company, yeah.
My mama let us have company.
Yep.
Uh, bro, you can, um... We can open up, if you like, um, we can do the Moorish American, uh, Moorish American prayer and... And, uh, while I work on, uh, getting this...
Bring that up here.
Yeah, about to get this, uh, laptop set up.
About to start opening, uh, the meeting here, thanks everybody for showing up. Those are coming in. I'm gonna begin with the Moorish American prayer. Allah, the Father of the Universe, the Father of Love, Truth, Peace, Freedom and Justice. Allah is my protector, my guide and my salvation by night and by day, through His holy prophet Noor Gharli, amen.
Islam, my share, I mean, yes, sir.
Alright. For those here, uh, we're gonna, uh, touch on a topic, uh, nineteen forty buck act. I'm not sure any few, yeah, heard of it, some read it, I'm not sure anybody else read it or not. We gonna go over that today's meeting. And also touch on the Public Salary Tax Act of nineteen thirty-nine. Came in.
That's me.
Oh. Oh. You again?
Yeah.
Yeah, about three times, oh, he got you three times, man.
Wanna remove one of these jokes?
Peace.
Alright. Which one did you, did you need me to pull it up on the screen fam, so that you, you can, uh, so everybody?
Yeah, cuz I be reading from my, from my far end.
I got you.
You be like, wonder where, where he's reading from? Yeah. It should be in the email too, I don't know babe.
Yeah, it should be.
People have it too.
Okay. Which one you want first, the Buck Act or, uh?
Yeah, the Buck Act, yeah, the Buck. Pull this one to the side. I mean, if y'all wanna participate, y'all can, I'm just gonna read, uh, first part of here, let me start. Okay, I'll move this out the way. Alright, I'm gonna start off reading, um, the United States Code, I believe, it's guys, he's narrating. It's Richard McDon- McDonald. Uh, the United States Code, I believe in its title twelve, describing the jurisdiction states that the federal jurisdiction is at the state borders, three miles offshore and is over fed- federal lands within the state boundaries. We live in outside DC, Samoa, US Virgin Islands, what's in? San Mar- Marinas Islands are, are not within the federal jurisdiction. Alright. Story of the Buck Act nineteen forty, in order for you to understand the full import, import of what's happening, I'm gonna explain certain laws to you. Uh, when passing new statutes, the federal government always does everything, everything according to the principle of law. In order of the federal government, I'll say de facto federal government, uh, de facto. To tax a citizen of one of the several states that have to have, create some sort of contractual nexus. The contractual nexus is the social security number. And so everybody's familiar with the social security number on there. In nineteen thirty-five, the de facto federal government is to the social security. The Social Security Board then created ten social security districts. Uh, the combination of these districts resulted in the quote-unquote... I was reading off your screen. Yeah, you good, you good. What was that? Uh, the result in the quote-unquote federal area was covering all several states like a clear plastic overlay. In thirteen, in nineteen thirty-nine, the federal government is to the Public Salary Tax Act of nineteen thirty, thirty-nine. This act is a municipal law of the District of Columbia, protecting all federal and state government employees and those who live and work any federal area. You gotta know that, we talking about federal employees and state government employees. Now, the de facto government knows it cannot tax those state citizens who live and work outside the territory jurisdiction of Article One, Section Eight, Clause Seventeen. Or Article Four, Section Three, Clause Two in the US Constitution.
Mm-hmm.
You know? In, in nineteen forty, Congress passed the Buck Act, Title Four, United States Code, subsection one oh five, that to one thirteen, in the section one ten E, this act authorized any department of the federal government to create a quote-unquote federal area for, in position of the Public Salary Tax Act nineteen thirty-nine. This tax imposed at Title Four, United States Code, subsection one eleven. The rest of the taxing law is found in Internal Revenue Code, Social Security Board had already created the federal area overlay. So, uh, does anybody know about the Social Security Act?
That's what I was gonna pull up fam, since we...
Yeah, Social Security Act, yeah.
Since we was talking about it, you mentioned it, I was like, yeah, we gonna go ahead and grab that too.
Yeah.
Social Security Act?
Yeah, Social Security Act on there. Cuz he... And they always somebody signing a law, you know it's de facto law.
Right.
Yeah, cuz it's not legit at all. You know, if you need to know this, about how they've been taxing your labor, taxing your property, your house, your homes, your cars. Be, you be surprised, you're, um, there was a list in, uh, how the Federal Reserve, would they tax you? Almost anything. You know, state tax, what else, city tax, water tax.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I, um, I'm definitely aware.
Yeah, it's a, it's a laundry list of taxes.
A laundry list of fraudulent fucking activities.
Yeah, yeah, you be surprised, man, people just getting taxed, they're doing, they don't even understand why they getting taxed. Why I gotta pay all this? Man, it's too... Yeah, all they need is...
Still in my finance and then, and you got the people food into believing that it, it's for the greater good of, you know, of the so-called government and you're helping build the roads and all that shit and that, none of that money, so-called money even goes to that shit.
Go see that federal debt, so-called debt, you know, you know, we, we don't, as Aboriginal indigenous people, we don't have no debt. We Moors, we don't have, I can't be dead on your own land. It don't make sense, can't be dead. Got you on it, hamster on the spin, spinning wheel, don't even know why. Yeah. Yeah, cuz if you, if you pull up and everybody know my new sport, laws of District of Columbia, de facto, they don't care nothing about your constitutional rights. They're not, they're not, they're unconstitutional.
Right.
Constitution, you know the social security, how they taxing people.
Well, so were we still reading this one or did you?
Yeah, I used to, uh... Let me go back.
You good here or did, or did you need me to pull back up the social security, uh, history?
Uh, you can scroll down a little bit.
Alright.
There's some things going on, if anybody wanna jump in, they can, got any questions?
Abso- absolutely, this is an open forum, we all learning together, some of us are aware of certain things, some of us are not. Ain't nobody, ain't nobody, uh, ruler up in this piece.
We're all learning, we, I'm still learning, trying to do, yeah, certain keywords and, you know, you gotta read this thing about, certain things about three or four times, like, oh, I didn't catch that the first couple of times I read it.
You know, that's always how that is, anything you...
Yeah, you like, man, I just gotta read this again. Cuz it works, yeah. What was I?
I go down, find my fam?
No, you good, you good, I'm gonna start right here. Uh, Title, uh, Four, United States Code, subsection one ten D. The term quote-unquote state includes any territory or possession of the United States corporation. You know, they don't put the corporation or I did, I'm, I'm gonna add that on there, yeah. Title, the Title, uh, Four, United States Code, subsection ten E. Term quote-unquote fairer area means any lands, premises, held or acquired by, for the use of the United States corporation, department, establishment, or agency of the United States corporation. Any federal area or any part thereof which is located within it, exterior boundaries, any state shall be deemed to be a federal area located within such state. Now, there is no reasonable doubt that the... There is no reasonable doubt that the federal state is imposing an excise tax under previous... Oh, somebody speaking or?
Yeah, I'm hearing the feedback too, bro. Hold on. See if we can get that, uh, if anybody who's got your mic open, can you please mute them? And, uh, let me make sure that I have the mic open on this laptop. Type one second. And no, I don't have the audio on. So let's, uh, let's see if that, let's see if we good, fam, you got the phone, bro. Are you?
Okay. Imposing excise tax under provision, Title Four, United States Code, subsection one oh five, where states, and then part, section one, one zero five, states and so forth taxation affecting the federal area's sales or use tax. A no person shall be relieved from liability for a payment of collection of, or accounting for any sales or use tax levy by any state. Somebody still got the mic on or you got a question? Oh, cool. Tax authority.
Can you hear me, bro?
I can hear you.
Are you still getting your feed, and you still getting the feedback on your side?
Nah, it went away.
No, God, it was good?
God, it's gone.
Alright.
I was, okay. Are you good? Yeah, what was that on there? Okay, by any constitution taxing authority there, having jurisdiction or levy such tax on the ground that the sales or use with respect to which such taxes levy occurring in a whole or in part within a federal area, in such state or taxing authority, so have full jurisdiction and power to levy and collect any tax, you know, any such taxing, any federal area within such state to the same extent, with the same effective, effect as those such areas was not, not a federal area. You can see that right there, taxing people, sales tax, taxing people, cover their bus on, on their debts. Here. Okay, I'm gonna skip some of it, I'm gonna read all of it, but I can get the hint cuz in the email, I'm gonna get to the main parts of it too. I know you're running, you can scroll, you can scroll down a little bit. Scroll back up a little bit. Oh, there he is, right there. Okay, cuz I'm gonna skip a little bit cuz yeah, I can read that.
What, what paragraph, bro?
Uh, at federal, uh, federal area.
Right here?
Yeah.
Alright, bet.
That, uh, any area designated by the agency, EAC department established of the federal government. This includes the social security area designated by the Social Security Administration. Any public housing area that has, has federal funding, a home that has federal bank loan, a road that has federal funding, almost everything that the federal government touches due to any type of aid. Springfield versus Kenny one oh nine, E two D sixty-five, nineteen fifty-one, I guess it's. appendix right there, they need, the federal area attaches to anyone who has a social security number or any personal contact with the federal or state governments, was, you know, de facto, through this mechanism, mechanism that the federal government observe the sovereignty of the people as well the sovereignty of the several states by creating quote-unquote federal areas with the boundaries of the states under authority of Article Four, Section Three, Clause Two in the federal constitution, which states. The Congress should have the power to dispose and make all needful rules and regulations respecting the territory or other property belonging to the United States. And nothing in this constitution shall be construed, construed as to prejudice of any claims of the United States or any particular states. So they're right there, they're violating the constitution. If you were, they, and they know that for a fact they're violating the constitution. They know most people, they haven't read the constitution. So they can continue these, these acts, codes, ordinances and continue, uh... Uh, taxing the public citizens that use a social security number. Continue, cuz most people not aware of this, and then passing Buck Act. And then that's what the people have been paying these taxes and, and taking your property when you don't, um, give in and paying those so-called taxes. They got the declaration.
Yeah.
I'm gonna continue on this, yeah.
We still on this one?
Yeah, I've finished that one right there.
Okay.
And it, this, it gets a little bit interesting here too, goes in detail how they view, uh, view United States citizens or Fourteenth Amendment citizens. Uh, right here, therefore, all US citizens, i.e. citizens of the District of Columbia, residing in one of the states of the Union are classified as property as fan trap franchisees of the, uh, de facto federal government as an individual entity. You know, see this willing steel corporation versus Fox. Because you telling right there that they're, they're not, uh, anybody claiming to be a US citizen. They don't see him as a human being.
Clearly.
And they, clearly they sending you as a corporation. They not li- you not listening, unless that's a corporation, you're not listening as a human being, a natural person. You listen as an artificial person.
Right, and that's a clear violation of the constitution, as well as, as well as the, uh, declarat- uh, uh... UN Declaration of Human Rights, Rights of Indigenous People. I even got the American Declaration of, uh, Rights and Duties of Man up here, which they, they all, they all mirror one another, so... The problem is, is that we don't even know about our rights, bro, and how to, how to enforce them, and that's, that's been the whole problem.
Some people don't know their rights, yeah.
Facts, and if you don't know them, you don't have any.
Uh, then, then it, that's where the abuse come in, they abuse you, I mean, tax you out all your property. You know, getting, getting these ledge bills in the mail, you know, they bills, council statement. On their, on their debt, United States corporation debt, they hold the Federal Reserve, you know, which is linked with the IMF, stuff like that, United Nations, it's, list goes on and on. And you never wanna why, they getting taxed and see their property getting stolen, going to, you de facto courts, having in some private room and say it's like, hey, if you don't pay, pay up, be taking your property or might put you in behind bars.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Cuz you, they, cuz you agree to it, cuz you didn't read, you didn't read the contract.
Exactly.
Going, you're not even aware of what, how they viewing you. So that's our, that's a lot of, you, some of us of people today, we keep saying racism. You know, the arguments what they giving us and that's what we go on. And don't even know there's the Buck Act. You just taxing, taxing you there.
Right.
Basically taxing you there, you don't even...
To death, literally, to death.
People stressing out, people going to hospital, stressed, I don't know how they gonna pay it, when they gonna pay it? They gonna take my stuff, I got, you know, no place to live, they gonna tax you out your home, take your prop. It's, our people just, you mean, learns certain things over here. Yeah, okay, I'm gonna keep reading all here, it goes, get a little more interesting in the, in the Buck Act too. Of course. Islam.
Peace more.
Like, Ryan, click on that for me. It popped up.
Which?
Ah, the Microsoft edge. Ah, the Microsoft edge. Okay. Uh, these areas are similar to any territory. That the de facto federal government requires through the purchase conquest of terror, that being treaty therefore imposing. A federal territory law upon all the people in this quote-unquote federal area. The federal territory law is evidenced by the executive branch, yellow fringe, US. Flag flying in schools, offices, all courtrooms. Doesn't, you know, they fly, we all see them, you see them on TV. Uh, the banner. The gold fringe.
Right.
Yeah, in your face. Says schools, offices, courtroom, you in a hostile environment.
Exactly.
You in a house of you. And people say, oh, that's the US flag, they don't even understand what they go friends is.
No, they don't.
Yeah, it doesn't.
And I'm not, I'm still not a hundred percent clear on, on, uh, on the fringes, but I do know that it, it indicates that we're at war or something, something of that effect.
Yeah. We are war.
Supposed to be at war, but you know, the end of that, we're not of the United States corporation.
Can't be a city, you can't never be a citizen of the US. Our people think with, some of our people still thinking there's US citizens. You don't even know that, that only imply that status don't, never apply to you.
Right, exactly.
It never apply. Okay, then it goes in detail here, you must live on the land. Think about it, live on the land. In one of the states in the union of the several states, not any. Quote-unquote federal state or federal area. Nor you can be involved in any activity that will make you subject. To the quote-unquote federal laws. You cannot have a valid social security number. A quote-unquote resident driver license, a motor vehicle registered in your name. A federal bank account, a federal register account number laying to the individual's person. Social Security, see Executive Order number ninety-three ninety-seven, November nineteen forty-three. See how they. They tying people to the taxes. Again, every move, movement you make. That ties you to a social security number or the corporate activity that you're doing, they're taxing you.
Yes.
Real slick, dude. Yeah. And most people think that's, you know, the social security number, they think that's identification. There's never, there was, when it first came out, and it said it was not used for identification nineteen thirty-five. On there. And, or, uh, or I'm gonna read on, or any other known contract. See it. Implying in fact that will place you with any quote-unquote federal area. And thus within a territory jurisdiction of the municipal laws of Congress. Remember, all acts of Congress are territory in nature. And that, and only imply within a territory jurisdiction of Congress, see American Bank, uh, corporate. American Bank Corporate versus United Fruit Company two thirteen, US three forty-seven, three five six dash three. Five seven nineteen oh nine. All the court case. See how they tie you, you must live in, on the land. Now, when the quote-unquote federal area they tax. Within a driver license, any documents that you receive from the so-called de facto government. Places you under their jurisdiction.
Right.
You know, people think they're, well, they, they free. Well, I hear that all the time, so I'm a free American, you know, you know you subject.
Exactly.
Oh, oh, yeah, they got you, it's a contract, his state is a contract.
Facts and super facts, and the words, uh, the word, the, the word, uh, citizen actually means subject.
Yeah. Cuz a lot of people don't have, you know. Don't clarify when he say that, cuz they hear, all they do is hear citizen, and oh, okay. You don't even know the contract, that, all that stuff is contract, cuz you agreed to it. And they, and they hold you liable. For the contract. Cuz they didn't tell you the terms and conditions in the first place of the social security. A driver license, a motor vehicle. Didn't tell you the, uh, terms and condition.
Exactly, so it's a boy, it's boy contract, it's a boy contract from, from there, because, uh. The, the terms of, the terms are not clear.
No, cuz they, cuz order, you ain't buy no contract law. It, all the contract can't be vague. It can't be, okay, if it was a contract. On there, and if they did present that contract to you. They, it can't be vague with somebody's, okay, I'm scratching my head. I said, well, I'm gonna still sign it, put my signature, my signature on that paperwork anyway. It can't be vague, they had to be clearly stated, okay, this is what this contract is about.
Exactly.
They had to stake that, but you know, they, they're not gonna tell people. Um, okay, this is, this is what this driver license is really about, or with the social security number. This ties to the nineteen thirty-five, when he created social security, they ain't gonna go into details about that.
No, no. Cuz then there would be too many more questions following.
Oh, but yeah, open the floor, yeah, okay, what is this? Okay, you taxing me, I don't need a social security, and you. That's reading on last night, too, about the social security, this goes in Internal Revenue Services. He goes deep in there that. One does not need a social security. At all. To even work, live, whatever. Whatever business you doing, you don't need a social security.
Absolute facts, I agree with you.
I agree, I bear witness.
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely. Definitely, some people don't say, yeah, and they keep asking, we need two forms ID. You know, social security, most people get the social security number. This driver license, you know, is not identification, driver license not identification. But they give their social security, and don't even know the reason behind that, that the, and also states. And there's two. And. The Social Security Act, which is part of Title forty-two, United States Code. Most people don't know that's a voluntary system, too.
Right, exactly. Which, which one is that? You want me to pull that up, fam, so we can look at?
Yes, on here, I got them Harvey Bay, I'm reading.
Okay, bet, 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 okay.
Yeah, I think you had that, too, Ryan, don't you?
I, I do, I got it.
You got it on the backup, yeah.
I don't have, I don't know if I have a PDF copy, but I do have.
Oh, okay, it's cool. I'm gonna read on backup, but too, it states that the Social Security Act, which is part of Title forty-two. The United States Code was enacted nineteen thirty-five. As a U, United States Government sponsored voluntary pension program. You know, they don't clarify that either about the social security.
Which code is that? United States Code, what?
Uh, Title forty-two. United States Code, Social Security Act.
Forty-two. What, what, uh, chapter or section?
Uh, it doesn't state on here, it says, I'm just reading back up. Yeah, I think it's, uh, if you click on the first link up there, it pulls up. As I was looking on it last night, I think it's, let me see. Pulls up there. Uh, let me see, put on chapter seven.
It is, yeah.
Yes, so.
Yeah.
And it says a benefit for individuals who wish to voluntarily. Everybody knows voluntary is your own free will. Participate, participate in the program, which is administered by a foreign European private social security administration corporation. You know, Europe is across the water, and North America is not Europe. Most people only know that's a, a foreign corporation.
Exactly.
They don't even know that, they think it's, that's part of United States. Republic for, former government, where these people are named. That's two different jurisdictions. How they operate. On there. That's need, that need be, uh, clarified too, to the people, too. And stating that, that's a, that's a foreign private corporation, has nothing to do with the United States republic set up by our ancestors.
Exactly, and speaking of it. Um. Just the other day, man, I saw somebody's, uh, post on IG. And, um. They were indicating. Uh, let me, let me not even speculate, I'm gonna go to it real quick. And, um. I think this is, this is valid to our discussion, since we know that according to the Constitution, it says in Article six, paragraph two. That all, um. All treaties. That are made or which shall be our supreme law of the land, that which makes the Constitution the supreme law, so. Someone was attempting to say that we're not a party to the Constitution. And, um, I agree from the standpoint of the Fourteenth Amendment. Um. Thirteenth and fourteenth, where, where. As the prophet said, there was never a need for them for the salvation of our people. So. I asked, well, why would he indicate to enforce the Constitution? Not to say man is infallible. But. Why would he? As part of the basic mandate. Or, you know. State of mind, let's, let's go there, the, the basic state of mind and principle of enforcing the Constitution, why would he? Stipulate that or indicate that for some, something for us to keep abreast in the forefront of our mind, and then. Apparently. As some, some people think, we're not a party to it.
As a, oh, go ahead.
As a, uh, and specifically. Uh. And of course, you know, this has to, lot to do with how some folks are. Not necessarily in support of, uh, Jamal or Rosa de Morris. So this, this brother in particular, he, he dropped a, and I haven't looked into this case law yet. And I will. But, uh, this one in particular, he's saying that Corrigan versus Buckley. And Barron versus Baltimore. Indicated or said that. Um, and he made a point to indicate that these were Albion's. And, uh. That. Uh. We're not. A party to the Constitution and that the treaty is higher. But. If in the, in the Constitution, it references the treaties being supreme law, then how would we not be a party? To the Constitution, that's just common sense, it's right there.
Yeah.
If, if I'm wrong, someone is trying.
Yes, big, yeah, cuz. Go ahead.
The treaty and the Constitution, the treaty is actually what allows the Constitution to be valid.
Contract.
So without the treaty, there would be no need for the Constitution, because what are you here for?
Inshallah, okay, so I'm not. I'm, I'm not off balance here as it relates to raise basic comprehension when you're, you know. Gathering details on something, I just wanna be certain. That I wasn't off base here, and then the point that he brought up as relates to that was, it's as if to say. Because the Supreme Court used these two so-called decisions, now that invalidates what is in the Constitution, I'm like, well, wait a minute. We both know that there are no lawful courts. In the first place, since whatever timeframe that is, and I don't know that right off the top of my head, but.
Seventeen eighty-nine, I think seventeen eighty-nine. Yes, sir. lawful courts. Administrator court, that's minister, that's a minister.
Exactly, so if that's the case, then. I knowing that and you knowing that, and now all of a sudden, there's a, a case law that's listed. That sort of contradicts, well, the Constitution also completely states that there can be nothing that is. In contradiction and variance to this Constitution, so like. Come on, why, why are we, why do we continue to fight ourselves on what we're seeing as fact? And then complain about what we see, like, I don't, I'm not comprehending that, I'm not gathering that at all. And I yield, apologies for interrupting.
Oh, you good, you good, you good, that's a valid statement. Cuz we, cuz when, probably said, when nobody draw the state enforced that Constitution. Cuz all, all the Europeans agreed to the Constitution and agree to the treaty prior to the Constitution and the Articles of Confederation. They already, they was already in contract. He says in Article six, and you can read, let me pull it up here, I just had it open. Article six, it states, they was already obligated. Anything operating on land. It says the first sentence, all debts contracted and engagements entered into before the adoption. Of this Constitution shall be valid against the United States under this Constitution and under the Confederation. Cuz they was already obligated. Before that Constitution came about. Even do business on the way, it was already obligated.
You know it, I know it, I get it, and though I haven't even digested and really dissected the Constitution prior to being reminded of our, our birthright and heritage. I mean, it's common sense is right there, I mean, we, we, and we call ourselves Moors, so that means we, we study the sciences of mathematics and arithmetic and. And etymology and so forth, so like. What do you, why are you in it, why, why are your terms and words are at variance to what's actually being stated there, like? Why, what's up with that? So you're an agent, then, is that what it is?
Yeah, or trying to, uh, cause confusion. About say, he said force that Constitution, cuz that came from my ancestors, we're, we're, we're the government.
They.
You said, we gotta force that Constitution. I have a question, that's our responsibility as Moors, we have to force that Constitution. Cuz everybody that sits in public office. Anybody's a public official has to take the oath to the Constitution. Preserve and protect the rights of the people.
Have a question.
Go ahead.
Yes, sir. Has anyone seen Secrets in Plain Sight?
That's new to me. Is that a website or work, I can pull it up right now, fam, we can.
Yeah, what is that?
YouTube Secrets in Plain Sight.
Secrets in Plain Sight?
Hmm.
Now, just, what I'm, what I'm gonna speak about, about it, it's gonna be very insignificant, but it's important because I picked up on something in what you're speaking on. Um. I picked up on. Yes.
Which, which one, fam, where we at, bro?
Secrets in Plain Sight. The one that's three hours, forty-three minutes and forty-six seconds.
Okay.
That's what, that's what you will take a look at, and trust me, you will not be disappointed. Um, however. Um, in that presentation, you will hear our Albion son presenting.
Oh, wow.
He, he will say, that's just a friggin' A. Um, he will say that, um. He will call the side of the one note on what we recognize as the reverse side as the obverse side.
Hmm, yes, sir.
However, it's an Albion son that's calling what we recognize being the reverse side. The obverse side, is he wrong? No. It's not wrong for him. Being an Albion son. Recognizing what we recognize being the reverse is his obverse.
Facts.
Cuz he can only speak under that. So people that even taken oath to uphold the Constitution against all violators, foreign and domestic. How many of them? Can speak? For the obverse side that is the counter.
Hmm, hmm, hmm.
So can we really get mad when? The reverse to us, but adverse to them can only enforce? The reverse to us?
Hmm. Hmm.
Who's sitting the seat for the obverse for us?
Right.
Yeah, that's true.
Right.
So the reason why we don't have remedy, cuz we're not providing it for ourselves.
Thank you, you know.
Oh, it's always a simple answer.
Yep.
I yield the floor, Islam.
Islam, boy.
Islam.
You made a valid, valid statement there. So. So we gotta, it's it. We gotta take our place amongst men, we don't, who's, who's standing, who's speaking up for the nation? And placing himself in that seat, let it be known that. The real government is still operating, the republic's still here.
Dig that, exactly.
And who's standing up and actually standing voicing, and, and not just one person, it gotta be collective of us. Unity, we gotta have unity for. Unity, we gotta have unity first. We keep saying this, we on this side, this, doing this. I was like, we gotta focus on unity, we will never take our seats back.
Right.
We will never, cuz there's no unity. Cause we know that they're sitting in our seats. Lot of us know that. That's okay, these people, we know they're de facto. We know they pushing this democracy. And in the secret, they know that it's actually a republic, it's the real government. And but who's out there as, as a group, as a Moors nation? How we made an impact, okay? We are the legit government here. How we in, in, in the state, hey, we need to take our rightful place?
I, I, I completely agree with you, but I, I wanna quickly add on and then I seen brother Hassan wanted to, uh, to jump in. My thoughts, fam, was right along those lines when this so-called madness happened down at the Capitol. All I can think is, well. The Albion showed up enforcing in number. With arms and things of that nature, and they're stating their point in their case. And all I can think is, well, why isn't there turbans and fezzes? And Asiatics. They're representing our position as being the Aboriginal indigenous of the land, but yet. You would hear these temples, so-called temples. Either disown or speak up as relates to some sort of adverse. Situation that's, that's uh happening. I'm, I'm appalled by it. Honestly, you, you talk as if we're supposed to be. So we know, especially as it relates to the things that we studied according to the prophet's literature. As my brother Hassan would say, reach, you know, meet, meet the prophet in his literature.
Yeah.
But yet we deny it. How? How do you do that? And I yield, brother Sonic, if you wanted to add on, had something to say. Your mic fam.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, thank you. Um, my apologies. I, I just think about, you know, even right now and just if you, you know me, I like to listen. To see where everywhere, you know, the conversation is, so I don't, you know, get far off. But make sure I'm making correlations just to add to the wisdom being presented that, um. Article One, Section Ten. I think if, for some reason, this is a part of me thinking about some of Article One, Section Eight, Section Nine and Section Ten. That if we start, I guess, grasping the objective there, like if we look at. Constitutional enforcement, like we look at basketball. And nobody likes when the whistle is blowing on us, cuz we. When we have a basketball in our hand, we like and wondering this situation. Alrighty, so the last thing we want to hear is foul, travel, double dribble, out of bounds, backcourt, you know, flagrant foul. So usually when we learn how to not do those things under the whistle really well. Not saying that we want to be under the whistle, however, if I can use a movie correlation, a divergent, every time Tris just was herself. Regardless of how the people that were observing everybody. Cause he's like, okay, we find these ones that don't really need to follow our program and don't wanna use our social security cards and birth certificates. We gotta kill them because they're gonna make it worse and make all the other ones see that they don't need it either. That was the whole purpose of diverging. Because, because the same ones they were killing was the same ones that was there to, you know, take people out of that BS or whatever, right? So with that being said, I'm thinking there's something about Article One section, cuz the only thing that's kicking our ass is finances, that's it. I need finance and I needed bad, never before have I needed finance as badly as I do at present in a, um, letter to be read in every meeting by Prophet Nobudrali, right? So as I'm thinking this, it's like, okay, I'm pretty sure my Moors are from Missouri, alright, that's in all statements and prophecies. So that means you gotta show Moors things, right? And usually that it, it's sad, however, that's what it takes sometimes for certain people. And sometimes the show ain't. Tapping someone on the shoulder and hey, look, I got this. Sometimes it'll be like you got a group of people like we are here and we have these like minds and we're like, alright, Joe. Let's look at Article One, Section Eight, Nine and Ten, because this is what Congress can do. So when we're assembled in Congress, as we do, like we're doing right now, this is a peaceable assembly. We're enforcing Bill of Rights One right now. Cause peaceable assembly is coming together. I mean, in Moors Latin, glacia and asimbleia is the term for church. So we're here doing that. I'm hoping and adding the wisdom that I'm saying, and then I'm gonna yield the floor, so I'm not so verbose. That Article One, Sections Eight, Nine and Ten, I just think is maybe something we should probably like. Just look at throughout the, you know, months or whatever, and then just get used to it so that, you know, if we do have to go to basketball court. Or whatever types of courts. We're not concerned if somebody talking about tweet, you double dribble and then we can be like, man, get this guy outta here, he's just calling anything. You, you know what I'm saying? Like, cuz at that point, you're people, and people can see you can play disciplined ball, they don't wanna play you no more.
Right.
You, you see what I'm saying? I mean, you can play jail ball all you want, however, it's gonna end up with somebody. Doing some time somewhere and we don't wanna, you know what I'm saying, but you know what I mean? At the end of the day, yeah, I think. We learn the objective, then we won't have to abandon the platform with Fourteenth Amendment practices if we like. Cause I'm pretty sure things about money, financing, credit, it's gotta be there between Articles, uh, Article One, Section Eight, Nine and Ten, and I yield the floor, Islam.
Islam, gratitude for that album.
Islam.
Brother Reggie, I know you're presenting today, but I wanna.
Oh, yeah.
Read that, um, that letter by the, by, by the prophet. Uh, Moore Science Temple of America, Home Office, Three Sixty Zero Three Indiana Avenue. Nobudrali Founder, Chicago. Number, uh, number three, January. Uh, eighteen. Nineteen twenty-nine, to be proclaimed at every meeting. Dear Brother Islam, I am glad to know that I have few faithful Moors among you all. And I desire for them to know the truth and the divine truth. There is a host of jealousy about me and the movement. Now by the some same people. Of our side of the nation that claimed it was only a joke and unreal, but now since they have found out. From the government officials and the nations of the earth, that this is the only sole foundation, sole foundation. That all Asiatics must depend upon for their earthly salvation as an American citizen. They are working every scheme that they can to disqualify me, so they themselves may take charge of the situation. I have notified all these things to you long ago in the past. So I ain't new to this. It is through the faithful Moors that contribute to the movement and uplifting funds. The ones that pay their divine respect to me and the movement will be remembered. This is why I'm calling upon all faithful Moors to increase their faithfulness to me, your prophet and your divine Moors movement. Not my pockets and this temple. But your divine Moors movement. I need finance and I need it bad. Never before have, have I needed finance as badly as I do presently, as I do at the present. That I may shove aside the discord that is facing the nation. Not me, not my home, not my pockets, not my so-called piece of land, but the nation. It all comes. Through jealousy because of my fame and nobility. The nations of the world will recognize the movement with, will not recognize the movement without me, the prophet being the head. It has been proven by my work in which I have performed in the last few months. Because I was at the governor's inauguration to represent the Moors Divine and National Movement. And I will be at the inauguration of President Hoover for the same cause. Islam, Nobudrali.
We'll read, yeah. Cause we had a step, um, basically. And follow with the message of what the prophet was saying. Cause we do need, um, a, a good, an organized body to be a good standing government. Cause the government already exists, we have not taken our place.
That's the part.
We had not taken our place. Uh, where I said divine, was a divine warning by the prophet, I gotta pull that up, I had to, someone, I don't have with me. What he, he's stating there, oh, I gotta pull it up right here, right quick.
I got you fam, if, if that's what you.
Yeah, the divine warning. Had it up there. I'm gonna read a little bit of it. Kinda get you. Get your mind going there.
Yeah. That, that, that's actually one of my, uh, this, that's one of my favorite pieces from the prophet. Uh, because it's very clear for us as it relates to what he's, what he's intending and. This is, this, this piece of paragraph, uh, two paragraphs are my favorite out of the entirety. Um, of it, although all of it is extremely important. But this is where he actually sets it down for you to actually pay attention to. Like how, if you miss this, then you missed the entirety of what's been told to you.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? And, and I'll read it real quick and then I guess we can go ahead and dive back into whatever it is we had presented.
Oh, yeah, go ahead. Cause they tie, that ties to everything anyway, it's not separate.
Right, so I love my people and I desire their unity and mine back to their own national and divine standard. Because day by day, they have been violating the national and constitutional laws of their government. By claiming names and principles, i.e. not honoring Article. Six, etc. Uh, principles that are unconstitutional. If Italians, Greeks, English, Chinese, Japanese, Turks, Arabians, etc. Are forced to proclaim, to proclaim their free national name, names and religion. Before that constitutional government of the United States of America. It is no more than right that the law should be enforced upon all other American citizens alike. And all other governments, when a man is born and raised there and asked. For his national descent name, if he fails to give it, he is misused, imprisoned or exiled. I.e. throw in King's Speech where he said you were exiled in your own land. Any group of people that fail to answer up to the constitutional standards of law by name and principles. Because to be a citizen of any government, you must claim your national descent name. Because they place their trust upon issue and names formed by their forefathers. The word negro, Indian, African-American, Latino, etc. Deludes to the Latin language to the word nigger. Nigger, let me say exactly how he's got it written, nigger. The same as the word colored deludes to any thing that is painted, varnished or dyed. And every nation must bear a national descent name. Of their forefathers. Because honoring thy fathers and thy mothers, your days will be lengthened upon the earth. These names have never been recognized by any true American citizen, citizens of this day. Through your free national name, you are known and recognized by all nations of the earth. That are recognized by said national government in which they live. The Fourteenth and Fifteenth Amendments brought to the North and South in unit. Placing the settlers who were at that time without power within the constitutional body, body of power. And at that time, eighteen sixty-five, the free national constitutional law that was enforced since seventeen seventy-four. Declared all men equal and free. And if all men are declared by the Free National Constitution to be free and equal. Since that constitution has never been changed, there is no need for the application of the Fourteenth and Fifteenth Amendment. For the salvation of our people and citizens. Islam, I yield.
And also someone tied to that also.
What'd you say fam?
I'm a, uh, that's gotta message. I'm a, also, the divine one, the first paragraph. Also states, I'm gonna piggyback off you, it says citizens of all free national governments. Point to their national constitution are all one family, bearing one free national name. Those who fail to recognize, uh, the free national name of their constitutional government are classified. Uh, as, whoops. As undesirable or subject to all inferior names and abuses, mistreating that the citizens could care to be thrown upon them. And is a sin for any group of people to violate, uh, the national constitutional laws of a free national government and cling to. Names and principles that do to slave. See, you say how we keep getting abused, we keep calling ourselves black, Negro color, African-American, Afro-American, Indian. Those names. That's not tied to, that's not tied to any government.
Facts, I agree with you.
Show me what, show me who's, who's, who's going around the world. Calling, you go to United Nation, all the nations together, and they're not naming anybody, well, I'm a yellow person, nation or a blue nation. I'm a colored nation, you don't hear that.
Right.
Do you wanna why they're getting abused by claiming, using it out of their own mouth? They, they're projecting that negative energy out of their own mouth, like why come they talking to me like that? Why they keep, um, using my people throwing bricks, get dragged, drug out the car when it. Looking at, look, look at type of energy you bringing to yourself and to your people.
Right.
These so-called groups out here, ain't nobody talking about the Constitution, how it ties to us as being Moors.
Right.
We keep staying, we still stand around the Fourteenth Amendment citizen status. And a lot of these groups will put, keep putting our people in, in that same situation.
Yeah.
How many times you, these lot of these, you already know, I ain't gonna mention no names, you already know some of these groups out here. Yeah. I ain't gonna put nobody on black, we all know these groups out here doing.
Absolute facts. Uh, brother Hassan, if, if you're able to share that link for the, um, the life that we did. Uh, just the other day, I think that would be great for many of us to, uh, review. Uh, cuz we, uh, we definitely went in on some very viable points as it relates to. Nationality and just the simple, the simpleness of. Using words that are adjectives in the place of those that are nouns, in which case that puts you in that Fourteenth Amendment status. And I yield, no, more?
Yeah, I got you. I'm about to look for it now. I just went to Facebook to, um, look forward to share, actually. And, uh, I yield, I yield, I, I yield to them.
Alright, so, uh, uh, brother Reggie, this is your, is, is your present. When you, when, yeah, I'll be going back to the Constitution, are we going, where, where we at fam, what, what you?
We can go back to the Buck Act right quick, cuz everything ties to the Buck Act and what we need to be in our position as Moors, as a nation.
Islam.
I'm not gonna read all of it, but I'm gonna read some of it, kinda touch up on that, we left off that. And kinda get, kinda what basically happens every day. Where's we at? Okay, right there, that'd be good, right there, but yeah. Cause I'm gonna, if we lose up here. And it's this. There's also ties, we, we was talking about government and they also, like you said, we wouldn't get, we can get off subject, but was, that all ties. To the Buck Act too. How we, how we are subject to these federal de facto areas that the Albians created. May you subject to all kinds of taxes, you shouldn't, you not even obligated to those taxes.
Hmm.
You, remember, you, we're the government, we allow, how can a foreign de facto government be taxing you on your own land? Taxing, like you said, taxing out your per, private property? And all that. I, he said, he sent the link?
Yeah. He sent, he sent the link. So I think it gets saved in the, in the history.
Yeah.
So, uh, if, if, when I send out the, um, the recording, uh, you should be able to grab the, grab the link, if you don't grab it now. And I'll put in the, uh, links to what we're, we're doing right now as well in the chat. And, uh, is that good right there, uh, Reggie?
Yeah, it's good. I'm gonna read part of it, um, I'm not, I'm not gonna go all the court cases they have for you, if you can follow along. Um, just right there on top, there has been created a fictional federal state within the state. You know, C. Howard versus sinking, sinking from Louisville, three forty-four, U.S., six twenty-four, seventy-three. And, uh, all the court cases there, and they also here. And it's also in parentheses, it says, compared to also thirty-one CFR Council of Foreign Relations parts fifty-one point two and fifty-two point two was also identified a fictional state within the state. This, this fictional state is identified by the use of the two-letter abbreviation like CA, you know, it's California, AZ, there, Arizona, TX. Texas, distinguishing from the authorized abbreviation like you see there, California, Arizona, Texas, et cetera. These fictional states also use the zip codes, which are within the municipal exclusive legislature jurisdiction of the Congress.
Right.
You see how they place you in their quote-unquote federal area? Make you subject to all taxes. You need, you don't know, you don't know why you being taxed. Cause you, cause you must put in, if you're gonna send an email, whatever, so-called mail, you must write out the whole name.
Hmm. Hmm.
Hey. Really fast?
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, I guess it's about, um, putting, you know, your best foot forward and, and to talk about contracts. Um, because a lot of us just don't know what contracts we actually have out here. Um, because we're merge, you're supposed to have your proper identification, your tribe. You know, we know that a thumbprint is identification. Your, uh, and your, your government, your nation that represents you. But, you know, telling someone that a driver's license is not identification, that's a contract with the state. Your birth certificate is a contract with the state, which is, you know, um, I just wanted to say that, you know, we have to reverse all of this to get out of what, what we're in. Um, I, it's hard sometimes because some people don't know, well, what paperwork to fill out, you know? Cause if you haven't done it, you can't show the next person. Um, uh, the, this process is really, really, um, it's really long and sometimes we, uh, you have to understand what contract law is. And, um, and the temples, because we, the temple was created for us, the religious corporation was created for us to go to, but we know that that's infiltrated. And I, for myself, because I'm in L.A., I've, I've been to a temple and to understand what five oh one C three is, and, um, that's a process too. So, um, the Grand Cheekers did not talk about any of these things, or until I pledged, or, you know, uh, you're supposed to get a holy Quran, you're supposed to have, um, uh, any, or, uh, if anyone knows about, uh, borders around the Quran, that's a legal document that if you had to present yourself, you know, in court, this is what, you know, you should have. Um, but there's a lot to it. So anyway, but I just wanted to just talk about, how many contracts do you actually have out here? And, you know, what steps to take to get out of this de facto government?
What, actually, may I, Islam?
Islam, more.
I'm gonna say, good sister, that your question would be subjective on the mind answering. Ask me that question.
How many contracts do you have out here?
Zero.
Well, good, but that's not everybody.
Hold on, no, hold on, I'm gonna tell you, I'm, the answer is the same for everyone.
Right, right.
Yeah, the only way, but hold on, the only way though, okay, I don't, if you don't mind, Brother Reginald.
Go ahead.
Um, Brother Ronnie, go to RV Bay Publications dot com.
Absolutely.
And I would like the good sister to read, um, because I don't want you to say, I don't, I can be frank and blunt, right? Most people that aren't honest like us are pimp hoe situations with Morse signs. So what they'll do is, they'll see you really want more science, and then they'll try to pimp the information towards you. Right? Um, uh, open readings.
Yeah, open, yeah.
So as soon as you said, you know, west coast, it immediately in my head, I was like, okay, I didn't, I won't say Appalachians, but it's been a number of people, it's like, yo, they kinda like, you know, pimp hoe culture with everything out there, even down in Morse signs, so. With what you said, it already let me know like dag, man, that, that vibration is so familiar with what, I don't even know who that sister is, and it's just consistent with people out in the west coast, right? So, how to live within contract?
Contract, yeah.
And, and good sister, I'm not sure of your Appalachian, I'm not sure what you want to refer to you as, but, uh, good mother, what I would like for you to do is read the twelve constituents. However, the reason why I'm saying zero is because of the last part at the end of the twelve constituents there. A valid and lawful contract must meet the following criteria. If you don't mind, can you? The reason why I want you to read them sis, is because what I eat won't make you shit. However, if you read it, then you can be able to defecate your own means of making things happen in your mind to change the concept. Because this, when you have this in your mind, then when you go to, and I'm holding up air quotes for this, nullify all those contracts, then you'll be nullifying the contracts not with, okay, what's the next Fourteenth Amendment process? I need to not really be using according to Prophet Noobid Ali, but I'm still trying to reserve my rights in a Fourteenth Amendment process to make something, you know, not be valid, that's already not valid, because it's never been valid, which is void ab initio. So technically, I really don't have any contract, I don't know what I'm talking about, but I can't give it to you that way. The best way for me to make sure you grasp it, if I say, good sister, can you read these twelve constituents? Because when mother gets it, it's a breakfast fight, it's gonna be over by breakfast, cause that's what we waiting on. All these sons got all this knowledge, Wayne did nothing, cause we can't without y'all.
Mother's the nation, mother's the.
Islam, um, can I interject in this one second?
Yes.
I mean, obviously, yes, that's great information to go to RV Bay and to read those twelve, um, constituents. But to put real, simply put, anything, any contract that you do not have full understanding and knowledge of, like, uh, it's a word that I'm looking for that I can't think of right this second. But if you don't have all the back information to the, whatever contract you think you are into, it is not valid, it's null and void. If you don't have.
Good sister, is that Tunisia? Is that how you pronounce that?
Tunisia Bay, yeah.
Tunisia Bay. Are you Renee L.?
No.
How do I know that?
Cause I just told you that.
Right, and, and, hold on, timeout, because you competently have let me know that, right? You're national, right?
Uh huh.
I'm national, correct?
Correct.
We both allowed each other into each other's aura in this conversation, correct?
Indeed.
It's a viable contract, no?
It is.
Because it's two major-minded people on there, correct?
Hmm.
All Negro, black colors are minor.
All the time.
Read letter E, read letter E, read letter E. Read letter E, Mother Tunisia, read, I'm not, and I'm not, I'm not being smart, I'm not trying to make anyone feel little.
Oh, no, no, no.
I want the mothers to be up there, I just wanna.
Thank you, yes.
It's weird how I talk, it's weird how I.
I'm getting there, hold on, hold on.
Yeah.
I had something else pulled up.
No worries. Yeah, I just, I'm just making sure you know I'm not being offensive.
I don't feel offended in any way.
Excellent, okay, excellent, great, great, I just wanna make sure, cause I'm really excited about this. So E is, is what the point I'm making, letter E.
Okay, where am I, what are we looking for?
The screenshot, I mean, the screen share that Brother Ronnie has up.
Where's this, oh, okay, okay, boom, E. All right, a party to a contract cannot be a minor.
So there are no contracts out there. Cause all Negro, black colors are minors, anything Fourteenth Amendment is minors. So technically, they're under the hypnosis, which is a lie, that they're under a contract, no one out there unless they're Moorish American. And two of them have viable autographs on it. If that, if that's not on there, it's unconscionable, it's not a contract. It's wondrous. So the reason why I take people here to RV Bay Publications, because it's so overlooked. Because if you really, this is what I'm really saying, the reason why I asked you, are you Renee L.? Is because you can be able to identify that you're Tunisia Bay. Some people don't even know what a contract is or isn't, so these are the criteria to be able to identify. Cause you can have somebody say, hey, baby girl, I got this bridge to sell you in London for twenty notes. Just give me twenty and sign on the dotted line here, and the contract's clear. Timeout, where are you signing, sir?
Never see it, we never see it.
Not even that, it's the contract paper he gave you, he's only telling you to sign it.
And they never, they never put their, their signature anywhere.
It's not a viable contract. The driver's license, who else is signing that with you on that document?
You don't see it, dad, I believe they do sign it, but you don't see it.
It's not a wet signature, it can't be stamped.
Yep.
It's not a viable contract.
And it can't be ve, it cannot be vague either, a contract cannot be vague.
Where are the two wet signatures that you said you created the birth certificate, where are they? It's not a viable contract, you, you, and see, when you get that criteria, right? You guys really analyze that criteria, you will completely see that what you think are contracts are out there are only wolf ticket hypnosis, that's all it is. It's to make you think that, but, but Joe, they gonna turn off this, or they gonna do this to me, because they know you believe the lie. Because your energy is tied into it, so you're going to attract that which you think it is. Now, the reason why I say, ask me what contracts I got. I'm not saying it, cause I'm saying I'm well-studied and I'm being slick with the words, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, is I've read that criteria, and none of those documents meet the criteria, that's why I said I have no contracts, that's it, that's all, I'm not complicating, now you're the floor.
That's true, you, you never see their, you never see their signature on any document, I don't care if a mortgage, driver license, birth certificate, any contract. Car, you sign over a car, you, you never see.
Well, again, they're not contracts.
They.
So, so any document that's unconscionable.
And it can't be vague either, cause it.
Hey, look at those constituents, guys, I mean, will somebody really check those out? And cause the last one on the note says, if a contract fails to satisfy the laws that govern its making or construction, then any such contract is void ab initio, so it's not a contract, it's dead in the view of the law, it's semelitro mo tuus. So, what's semelitro mo tuus, the driver's license, what's semelitro mo tuus, the birth certificate, what's semelitro mo tuus? The, the, uh, uh, social security thing, cause these are all things that you volunteered to be an informant on an affidavit. You volunteered that information. Under the, under the auspices in your mind, that if you don't do it, you's gonna be missing out on, like, you can't keep up with the Joneses.
Right.
That's why.
You volunteered that.
And we're volunteering because, because we think that's how we have to keep up.
That's how you supposed to live.
And it's not living.
That's how they think.
It can't be living, cause look, it's dead.
They think, I say you think.
It's dead in the view of the law.
Yeah.
You're leased to your apartment, dead in the view of the law, your mortgage, dead in the view of the law. Now you see why the Egyptians called the, the land of the dead, ancient scrolls, book of the dead? Because everybody's doing corporate activities and nobody's telling you how not to do them unless you are within a trust organization that's like, pss, eh, preserve your rights. I yield the floor.
Corps, corporation means corpse, dead. Yes, what it is, that's what it is, is a corpse, it's not a human.
All we gotta do is change our perspectives, that's it. All we gotta do is admit that what we think are contracts is really not. It's just that we gotta now change our mind, it's not the contracts we gotta change out there, we gotta change how we're looking at it. Can we even identify what is and what's not? If you can't, if you don't know these twelve constituents, you should not be saying what's a contract and what's not. Not really, because you don't know what it's made up of. You don't, hey, hey, Tunisia, are you made up of one part, um, cinnamon, one part spice, and one part everything nice?
It depends on who you talk to, but no.
But look, even your answer was contractual. You, you see, do you see what I'm saying? So, so, so it's like, so now, how can someone say what something, well, it's like, okay, well, look, this is what I'm made up of, and if ain't nobody saying this, this, and that, and that about me, then it ain't me. So if somebody's saying this, this, and that, and that, and it's a contract, and we go, hold on, man, eleven of those things is right, but one thing isn't. So it's like the Ten Commandments, you break one, you break all, it's just twelve of them. So one of those things don't meet, it is not a contract, it will never be a contract. There's no such thing as half-pregnant.
Right.
You either are, you aren't, you either are a contract or you're not. All right, I yield the floor, seriously, I yield the floor, Islam.
Great discussion there. And it does say right below that, oh, F, contract must be entered into by free will, voluntary.
Can't nobody write you a damn ticket talking about, oh, you ain't got a contract with the state, he wear the license plate. Can't be forced into it, I am a shut up, I'm sorry, everything you gonna read, I'm gonna have a comment, so I need, I need my mic, I'm sorry, all right.
Any, anyone, any got, uh, got any questions or, uh, comments or concerns presently, before Brother Reggie continue on? Islam, Islam, you got them.
Yeah, cause like you said, um, you go back to the Buck Act, you gonna keep that up there?
I got you, hold on, Buck Act.
Buck Act.
Oh, so you mind if I say something real quick?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
All right, so I was just, uh, referring to, um, back to when Brother Hassan had did the Du Pao chimpanzee lives matter. And, um, I had referenced, um, that we just haven't been taught, you know, all this, so he's just admitting that we were taught wrong, that we did wrong, and just getting the mindset on now, on how to properly move about and do it. And I just yield the floor on that, Islam.
Islam, bro.
Yeah, that was a good discussion there, yeah, but we do gotta, yeah, clear our concepts. How we do it day to day, well, we, cause we, all we do is go about what somebody else tells us. We not really thinking about, okay, is this a valid, or this is, this is de facto, or this is de, de jour? We know, we, that never comes in our conversation, everyday conversation with one another. We don't, we just go about what, well, that what say, said on TV, so I'm agree with it. You know, we don't even know, do we really overstaying or staying what we're looking at?
True.
True.
Do we, are we? We say, oh, well, that's, I always seen, I seen that growing, I seen all my adult life, so I'm, I'm content with it. They don't wanna fight it, some people don't wanna fight it. They're, they're so used to being a, quote unquote, slave, slavery, mental slavery. That's how they think, we can't, we can't even get past the simple things.
True. They're comfortable, they're, they're arrogantly ignorant, brother, that's, that's, that's my term for it now, man.
Oh, they basically comfortable, we, we try to teach our people law, civics, nationality, birth rights. Now, yeah, they, they might give in a little bit and hear about it, but they're not gonna act upon it, a lot of, even the people I talk to. I was like, yeah, it, it's interesting, but hmm, it's cool about, I read this, you keep doing what I'm doing, but nobody, nothing's happened to me, so why should worry about it? Why should I correct anything, nothing's happened to me, I'm not getting shot, drugged, thrown in jail, and so I'm, I'm happy where I'm at.
Greatest, the greatest mistake, greatest mistake that, that, that I, a good people can make is to watch dishonor, to watch this, this loyalty, to watch, uh, the crumbling of, of, of good people and do nothing, and, and that's the problem right there, that is the absolute problem, right, I agree with, I, I yield.
I mean, we gotta come out by that mindset, I mean, we can't save every, I know we, my, where I see, I'm not gonna save everybody, we can't save everybody. We, the only thing we can do is, uh, put out the information about our nationality, that's, that's the only thing, I mean, you can tell a hundred people, maybe two people grasp. Then you get those two people, you done your job.
Facts.
Maybe they take goal and tell somebody else, and it'd be like a chain reaction.
I have a question the mothers didn't ask, and if I'm, oh, my god, I can't believe I did this shit, but no, cuz you got it right there, brother, um, Reginald. You got it right there, where you got the entire scheme was accomplished by passage of the Buck Act.
Yeah.
Right, and it says the public salary tax, Act nineteen thirty-nine to workers within the private sector, that's us. We're the private sector, right, so you have a trust, right, it's no need they had social security number, right? So that's when people would ask, and I think that's what a lot of the mothers are thinking, now, mothers, please correct me if I'm wrong. But I think the real question is, how do you do things without the social security number then? Because if, if these people are saying that, right, now, I, I know the answer, but I think that's what's really being asked, alright, so what do I do? Cuz a lot of the mothers be like, alright, I hear what not to do, I see what to read. What is it, you already mentioned it, it's on the back, uh, you said corrected, correcting the position at IRS, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so if Brother Ronnie, if somebody asks me for, for, for a social security number on anything, what's usually my response? Since I'm national, private sector, I'm not using the social security number, well, how, how am I gonna not use that social security number, Brother Ronnie?
Well, I don't have one, but I can provide you with my national, uh, ID, I can provide you with a copy of my, uh, baptismal, baptismal record. And that's identification, that should suffice.
Now, that's my two punch, my one punch is forty-two USC four oh eight.
I'll provide them documents, when they ask me for that, I'll say, I'll tell them.
Forty-two USC four oh eight, it is a felony to ask for my social security.
They can go to jail.
What is that again, I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
See, see, you see how they ain't asked, but they, what's that again, baby? No, I'm serious, I'm not being funny, that's what the women really, I have a woman here with me with a baby. I, I hear what women think often, because there's a woman here, and I'm telling you, it's I'm just trying to survive, and they say I need this nine-digit number, how can I not use it and still have food, clothing, and shelter, walk around naked when I want to, these titties hurting this bra, I'm telling you, let's be realistic, I'm not being vulgar. So the reality is, it's forty-two USC forty, four oh eight. You read forty-two USC four oh eight for yourself, it is a felony to ask or require that. But the only reason these people asking, because the so-called employer, or so-called whomever they are, whatever business, has a contract with the state through the comptroller to the Department of Labor Licensing Regulation, which is also in contract with, cuz the comptroller means count, blah, blah, that's one, one apple, two. Two, that's the count, the comptroller, or the county, who is actually in cahoots with the risk management, which deals with tax and assessment, taste and assessment, tax taste, same thing, cuz they fucking vampires, since that's the case, who they contracting with? IRS, who are they, the people you volunteer information to for them to suck your life's energy?
Thank you.
How do you avoid that, forty-two USC four oh eight?
And there's many others too.
Yes.
But it's, or the public law, privacy act. Was it nineteen seventy-four privacy act?
Right.
That's why I used to, when they asked me for a social, it's like, uh, I do not have or use a social security number, and here's the documentation right here, view it.
Yes.
I gave them paperwork, I said, hey, right here, if you, I'm, I'm not just saying it, I got proof and documentation, I do not have to provide you with a social security number.
No shit, that, that's also Bill of Rights four.
And sometimes I just use word of mouth, be confident, I'm intelligent.
Hold on, stop right there, stop right there, cuz y'all conversation started at constitutional enforcement. So you saw how, alright, we talked about acts, but we know acts really at the end of the day are fraud, cuz it's the acts of Congress, right? So, so that's acts, but we can use their fraud for, for our benefit, cuz that's the hypnosis they need to see. So, so, so that's how we can use acts, we, we're not believing that's our salvation. It's just, it's just, you know, oh, man, I got this pistol right here, and then I got this Peggy Sue over here, it's, that's it, it's just weaponry. So, 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 that, boom, got that, and then we was like, well, shit, you got United States, now we talking about United States codes, which come from public acts. But anyway, talking about United States codes, and then Brother Ronnie said shit, that's Bill of Rights four, boom, back to constitutional enforcement. So how did we get there, we had to go through acts, we had to go through U- United States codes, you see what I'm saying? We started out with the square, straight to the point, hey, man, do this constitutional enforcement. But how do you do that, and we got stuff out here, and that's like chapter twelve, tell us more about the Father God of law, we can meet in our heart. Okay, well, since I gave you the square, and the straight to the point, you ain't get it, alright, let me get to this point now and go around it, and speak in parable. We spoke in parable, now we back to constitutional enforcement, so how'd that happen that quick? How do you enforce Bill of Rights one to be secure on your person, houses, papers, and effects?
Right.
With the, with the, what Brother Reginald just presented, Title forty-two.
Yeah, he fully, it is ready, yeah.
Because if these people like, nah, fuck your constatation, we're criminals, we're, we're the violators, we're the domestic violators.
They basically saying that, if they does like, well, they just saying that they unconstitutional, when they say.
So you need to speak that language then, oh, okay, cool, well. Your policy, since this is who you are, right, it's your policy that you're under, okay, well, it says, it's a felony for you to ask me this, see, right here. That's what you said, you can't ask me for that, that's what you gotta do. It sucks, but that's how, that's how we got. We can't be the type that be armpit sweating, knees quaking and shit like.
They'll see it, they'll see it. Sometimes I use intelligence.
Islam, alright, I yield.
Sometime when they ask me for a social security number, sometime I might have paperwork, sometime based on my, how I say it, without any paperwork, how I don't use, or don't have a, a social security number, they will go ahead and do it. I've been in job, I cast checks, without paperwork, is how you saying it. Now, you're not being rude about it, just have intelligent, you know what, you know what you know.
Yes, you must speak in an intelligent tone, I know we're excited here, because we're making it so that, you know, we're coming from certain mindsets, that if we don't kinda have fun, a little excitement here and there, it won't jump us to really pay attention. But now that we done it, when you go to present to these people, yeah, you giving them the white glove treatment, you know how when Bugs Bunny used to slap Elmer Fudd with the white glove? That's how it is. And then you just keep going, is this, they just smack me with a white glove, let me do my job, I'm tired of getting smacked with a white glove. But that white glove, smacking them with a white glove will come out in the form of yeah, forty-two USC four oh eight, I, I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna break the law, and I wanna help you not break the law, I want you to keep your job. Cuz look at your nails, girl, girl, I like the way your nails and your eyebrows are threading, it's all, I like how they did that, girl. I wanna make sure you can't keep doing that every, every two weeks with your paycheck, so, I'm, I'm, I'm not gonna give you, I don't wanna help you break the law, okay? That's cool, that's cool, okay, so where your manager at, let's, let's hope you and your manager not break the law today. Sometimes you gotta do that, sometimes you gotta Jedi mind trick people, oh, well, you wanna, well, I don't know if I could do that, well, get some practice, go to Family Dollar or something and practice getting stuff, you know, taking off on the card, A A two 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 one four one. But sometimes you got to just do, it's sad, oh, my god, it's so sad, I just talked about how the West Coast, they be, you know, pimp hoe with the Morse signs. Um, sometimes you do got to use complimentary things to get where you going. I ain't trying to holler at the sister at Family Dollar, but I'm like, girl, my, that's twenty-seven pieces with that, girl, you did that right there, Johnny. You got, you got twenty-seven pieces with the Halle Berry, girl, I like how that look on you, make your eyes look all super, super shiny and whatnot, girl, you know, just playing with you. Jump down on the pit, you know, what's that, dice, you like rolling dice? That's crazy, man, oh, yeah, that's all I'm getting here to all the papers, matter of fact, let me get some, babe, you got, you got the juice, you got, okay, cool, oh, dang, you know, I forgot it's a Texas sale, are you ready, uh, I forgot it's a Texas sale, she, she gone, she, she's well in the hypnosis, I don't compliment her too much. She trying to figure out why I didn't ask for a number in front of my wife, she'll do anything right now. That's that thin line, what'd you say?
I don't think that works.
For you, cuz you're a woman. So you being a woman to another woman, no, you're not, my strategy isn't gonna work for you. But what I'm giving you is a principle, at its foundation, find what works for you to not manipulate and get over, but you're building relationships. When you go to do business, and when you're building these relationships, you want these people to deal with you in a way where you don't seem like you're belligerent or artistic in your interactions with the public. When we come off socially awkward, that's what makes people think our spirit doesn't resonate in the way of being able to say who we are. And that's what Brother Reginald, I think, is saying, he's saying, yo, if you resonate, I'm just telling you my strategy. Sometimes I gotta talk to people here near the Baltimore Corporation in a different accent, you know what I mean? Cuz I already know if I sound like this, like I'm from here near the Baltimore Corporation, they're gonna hang up the phone on. And that's real life, sometimes I'm like, excuse me, baby, I just wanted to know, you having, you having tomatoes that at your market? They're like, who's this, like, yeah, manager, because I don't, I'm a lot, and I'm talking so many, and I will do that, I will play, act, and all that stuff, because that's what they do to you. Okay, I gotta feed my family too, I ain't gonna rob you with a gun, I'll just do it with thinking of how to get in your mind, use the hypnosis that's necessary that we learned from Brother Hannibal, when, ta-da, I got what I need. We need to learn that, you gotta have, beat people with this. You can really beat people with this, and not, and not do it in a wrong fashion, and use it against your loved ones. I guarantee you, I guarantee you, I guarantee you, you'll be able to beat anybody here that's not on your frequency, or have the insight, and you'll get anything you want, I yield the floor, Islam.
Yeah, it's, it's all about studying, is, if you study it, and know who you are, and know who they are, and what their obligation is, you can, you, you, you don't need a social, you can and they'll, they ain't gonna resist you. They're not, they're not gonna say, okay, I know how to operate, I know, I know what works and doesn't work. It's what you know. We don't know and present it and come with attitude, I done that before too, guys, like, okay, I need change how I present, present information. You show them documentation, sometimes I do, sometimes I don't, it's about, uh, who I'm dealing with in front of me. It's all about, it's a learning curve. I don't pay tax when I go to the store, let them know, hey, I'm not taxable. They ask me for, okay, what organization, I tell them the organization, okay, you got the number, yes, here it is. Then, yeah, they asked me, I was like, yeah, I got receipts, I mean, not being taxed. Yep, now that, it's just, it's just learning curve, some people like, look, I once, I went to the store, it's sometimes your own people. I went to the store, lady's burning a hole through me, thought I was lying, she want, she wanted to catch me in the lie. Own sister, like, okay, she like, she like, I, I wanna, wanna catch him lying. Like, okay, this right belongs to you too, but you're not using it, you don't know it, nobody's teaching you, but you're getting taxes in. It's not, it's not me just saying it, it's your right too. Yeah, some people just don't understand that, that's like, I'm not getting over you, I'm just saying, I know what my position is, what your, what my obligation is, and what, what your position is too. You gotta learn, as I, it's a learning curve, it might take a, it might, some people might take a little while, some may quick, catch on quick. You just gotta, I mean, the study, it's a lot of information on there, I mean, it's paperwork, sometime, uh, it's how I say it, here, here's the documentation, I'm, I'm not lying, I'm not trying to get over you. I know you got a co- corporate contract with the corporate state. I know, cuz it says, I was reading it last night, I was telling Ronnie, I don't think I told Ronnie, where they, the company gets fined about fifty notes. Or something like that, I was reading, where they get fined about fifty notes or something like that. But they, we don't provide a social security number.
Okay.
As big as, something like, it's like fifty notes or something like that.
Yeah, they, they, there is a fine, I, I don't. I'm aware of what you're speaking on, bro, I, I've never, I've not gotten into the details that relate, as it relates to that, because that's their contract with the state. I'm saying, they have a contract to, uh, as it relates to that social being provided to them, et cetera, because really that tax that they are gonna take from you is what's supposed to be their paying, that's their responsibility. Exactly. And as we are expending our energy for, for finance, and now you taxing me for what I work for, how, that don't even fucking make sense. How are you gonna take from me what I worked for? I should have the free will, which I do, to provide that, if I wanna give away some of my energy as relates to finance, for the betterment of humanity, et cetera, and that should be a donation that I'm making, you're not stealing it from me. Forcingly taking it from me.
Comes back to volunteer, you volunteer that information. It ain't for it, that, that, see how the General Education Board dumb the people down?
Facts.
It comes back, Generation Board, they dumb the people down, so you don't, you don't question, okay, this is how it is, you don't question anybody. That's what I'm, you think you doing something right.
I have a question. So, um, as far as, like, the birth certificate, social security card, and other, quote unquote, uh, legal documentation that they claim is supposed to be um, representation of us as a person. Isn't that related to, um, like, the taxing, as far as, like, I guess you would say uh, the IRS corporation and all the other taxing, or taxing, isn't that related? Those documentation is related?
Yes, and if I hear your question correctly, what you're asking is, those, those instruments, are they connected to the so-called IRS, is that basically what you're asking?
Yes, like, I was trying to figure out if that's like, their version of a paper trail for you, cuz you know, they are, are, quote unquote, names, is like, that, almost like that's the name of I guess we're the representation, how I'm understanding it as it being the representation of another company, where you, um, select a name and produce it as a birth certificate. Um, is that, like, the same thing as them taxing us? Is that the same thing, if I'm saying it correctly, where you can understand what I'm saying?
Basically, yeah.
Yes, yes. Yeah, the etymological root. Yeah, the etymological root for taxes in the Latin is taxare. So taxare is the root for the word tax and taste. So when you volunteer to be tasted or assessed a certain way, yes, they will take your information and marandize you. Anything you say can and will be used against you.
And also, you gotta go back to the Constitution also. Let me pull it up here. In Article One, Article One. Section eight, it says Congress should have the power to lay and collect taxes, duties, and posts and exercise to pay debts and provide the common defense and general work for all the United States, but all duties.
Brother Reginald, wait till, wait till the mothers find out they're Congress.
Cuz it, I, yeah, cuz basically in Constitution, only Congress can lay and collect taxes. They have the, the authority. So who in, in IRS has authority and collect anything from? Show me your delegation authority and do that.
They damn enough in Congress cuz if they are.
IRS not important. Is it, uh, under oath, United States government said that, that IRS is not an agency of ours. It's under oath.
Sister Beth, you still had a statement or a comment?
No, just listen, I was agreeing.
Do the mothers know why they're Congress?
No, I don't know why I would be considered Congress, but go ahead.
What does government start with?
Family.
Oh, okay, then I yield. So you do know that.
Makes sense then, okay, real simple, one and two, okay.
That is quite easy. All we gotta work on is enforcement. I yield, brother Reg.
Some, uh, so I was sitting there thinking about, uh, when I was talking about the contracts, how the prophet, Prophet Noble Drury said to finish all old business in your new name and do business in your new national name. So then, wouldn't that be?
Leave all old business in your old name, do all new business in your free national name. It's law.
Yeah, so that'd be getting rid of, well, not getting rid, but knowing that all the contracts avoided because since the license, uh, stemmed from, the so-called license stemmed from the birth certificate and all that was void. That'll make everything void from the jump, correct?
Yeah, I agree.
It's like the birth certificate. It, well, it stamped the baby's feet. Using company, you didn't know. You didn't, oh, also the baby signed it. You agreed to it. I, you didn't, I wasn't aware of that. It was voided from the get-go.
Islam. And I'll admit to baby guys here in the background here, you know, my, my, my little love that you hear. She doesn't have a birth certificate. It was at-home birth, uh, well, at-home manifestation. Let me say that. Um, and I produced the baptismal record, um, ourselves, uh, we got a seal. I and her mom, you know what I mean? We put our autograph to it or whatever, but this baby is not known by any agent. And even when the midwife was like, well, everybody's got to have a birth certificate. And I was, you know, respectful to our beyond daughter and I said, you're gonna have a fucking problem with me. You mentioned birth certificate another time. Never had that come out your mouth. Whenever you come in here to take care of Sekman or anybody else, I don't ever wanna hear birth certificate. Me that the last time you mentioned it, do I make myself clear? And I wasn't trying to threaten her and I didn't intend to threaten her. However, I already had my mind made up in how I'm running government. Government starts with family. I don't need no strangers in my business and I ain't volunteering, I ain't volunteering information about this new baby. Period. That's my stance because that's what I'm gonna do. Whether ten people or two people with me, it's just me and Sekman. And we stood on that.
You got somebody else, Leah with you. Leah has nothing. She has no birth certificate, no social security card, no nothing. And she was born in the hospital and they made it a difficult process, like threat after threat after threat. But, yeah, they didn't know that I don't give a fuck. Oh, I'm sorry.
Please, please drop those in here.
Yeah, sometimes you gotta let it out.
Islam, I yield.
Yeah, it is true. You, I don't need somebody, if, somebody that you don't even know in your business. That's why, what you think, everything they do, I don't care from getting a car, getting a house. Whatever they do, they wanna be in your business, everything. They wanna know every movement you make. They want, hey, if you moving over this domicile over here, you moving over here, I need, we need, you need to change your so-called address so we know where you at. I didn't know. Well, I don't know who you are. I don't even know where you, you don't even know where I lay my head at. It's none of your business.
I had a friend that didn't experience that though. She, um, her baby was born in the hospital. Um, as the woman stated, she had a lot of trouble, but they wound up taking two of her children. She just got one back and she's fighting to get the other one. Yeah, I know a similar situation. Uh, a friend of mine had both of her daughters taken because she refused to, um, provide birth certificate, but, I mean, to fill out the birth certificate information. Um, they said that she was being difficult and belligerent. Um, they also did a sample of her urine, found marijuana in her system and, uh, had the child taken to Child Protective, uh, Services. And it was a mess. She just got, um, her daughter back like maybe three months ago. And she's, uh, she's a little over a year old now. So what, she's re, she's now about to, um, file suit. But she's not, um, she has no idea. She is not, she's not, um, she has no knowledge of. Well, I'm not gonna say no, no. She has very minimal knowledge of her, um, rights and law itself. So, I don't know, and she's listening to others, so I, I don't know how that's gonna go, but yeah.
The reason, Mother Tenezia, you were able to be in the same venue as this mother, however, have a different outcome is because the spirit of the law is on your dowry.
Islam.
So a lot of times where people, especially, uh, Moors that aren't conscious to this information to the level that you're conscious of it. What they'll usually feel like is a, oh, that's not fair. How come she gets and I ain't get? However, that's the proof that every mind must worship under their own vine and fig tree. In other words, if I can get you to thank you save yourself, if you're not used to thinking that way, but you only know some Moorish information, then your children are still gonna get treated as Fourteenth Amendment products. However, the spirit of the law is on your dowry plate, like Brother Reginald was saying. Sometimes you ain't even gotta write a document. You can just have this aura about you that you don't watch TV. You ain't been loving and hip hopping for the last three and a half months. So you don't have a certain look that comes off your eyes and you got a certain glow that's different from everyone else. So people are gonna automatically gonna say, something's different about this one. I ain't gonna play with them. Yes, sir, whatever you say. Yes, ma'am, whatever you do. Go right ahead. I don't wanna get in trouble cuz this seems important in your aura, in, just in your aura alone. But I yield the floor, Slum.
Indeed, yeah. I find that is very true that, um, even when I'm not, um, in turbine or I don't, I have, um, other daughters too, so even when we're all not, you know, in so-called habit, we always get a certain air of respect because, like you said, it's a spiritual, it's a spiritual thing. And it always precedes you before you go anywhere. So, yeah, I yield.
Islam, I just wanna add on real quick to what, uh, the mothers and Brothers Son and Reggie has been discussing. And we, we've actually touched on this already. And that's Amendment Four. I mean, clearly, it's an absolute violation of your person. Your house, your papers, effects, et cetera. To give you a so-called drug test, to force upon you any type of vaccination or testing. It's a complete automatic violation of your own person. If you don't know your rights, you don't have them. And that applies to so-called law enforcement entities too.
So you used to everybody agreeing what they say, well, we, they right. That's what it is. They're so used to agreeing, it's like, you don't have any right. They don't know they violating the, the law. They know, they don't even know that they're violating their rights. They just agree to it.
I think we'll share this with the mothers too, Brother Ronnie, since you brought that up and Brother Reginald, uh, since you guys have the limit for, uh. You see that where it says no warrants shall issue in Amendment Four? You got a right to be securing your person's houses, papers, and effects against unreasonable searches and seizures. And usually in order to have a search or a seizure, you gotta have a what?
Warrant.
Okay, so usually when people are asking you for identification, you know what that means, right? They don't know. So now, if they don't know, then here's a vocabulary term in Black's Law Dictionary Fourth Edition. You know how to turn to her, Brother Rodney. This is for the mothers. Want of jurisdiction. It's in the W section in Black's Law Dictionary Fourth Edition. If somebody wants jurisdiction when they have no warrant to search your mind. Where's your mind search warrant there, guy? Cuz that's what they're asking. Hey, excuse me, can I, can I, can I probe, can I, you know, probe your mind? No, you cannot. You have a search warrant for my mind? You, you see, you see?
It was your probable cause. You gotta have probable cause. It's like, you, you had no reason, pull me over and ask me for anything. What is your probable cause?
It's an inquisition.
Thank, and they don't know who they, the people they dealing with.
So the mothers can, can train the children up to go, instead of saying, mind your business, you can just ask. Don't say mind your business to, to the policy enforcer, highway man, baby. Just ask him if he's got a mind search warrant. He ain't gonna never be able to get one. No Article Three judge is gonna produce it. Cuz there's no place to be searched. What's the place you're searching? Inside someone's body against their consent? That's rape. You see what I'm doing here? It's called loopholes and not let someone fuck you. That's what I'm doing. I yield, Islam.
That's true. There's a, basically, uh, they have no probable cause, like Ronnie said, pull them in before. That's self-explanatory. They have, could they, you, they ask you like policy, first thing they ask you, okay, what should driver license insurance? Cuz they know, they have no reason to pull you over. They gotta get, you gotta give them a reason. They add, you know, you give, you're voluntary giving information to them, so they, you, you give them jurisdiction over.
Right.
Basically give them jurisdiction. Soon as you pull out some document, okay, they start interrogating you, make up anything.
In the moment that you, in the moment that you, uh, um, not only allow them to ask you those questions, but the moment that you, you've, um, decided to offer up any type of information, aside from establishing the fact because they, they're gonna ask you, well, do you know why I pulled you over? Uh, because you're violating my rights? That's really, because if you're telling me it's some sort of traffic offense, that's not a crime.
Think it's the United States code is a felony too. Them turn off, turn on the lights on, but there's no emergency. I think it's a felony, some type of. They turn their lights off, what's the emergency?
That's why you call nine-one-one to help them when you, soon as you see that the light's on.
That's a felony, when there's no emergency.
No, I'm just, I'm agreeing with you. As you said, I, I'm thinking again, see, cuz the mothers is like, I ain't about to send my baby out there like that, talking about calling nine-one-one with a police. You gonna get my baby shot. No, 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 we're not. Um, cuz if, if you think like this, it's, oh, hey, there's an emergency vehicle behind me signaling me to assist them.
He may need some help.
So you're gonna help them cuz you're an out, you're an upstanding American citizen. You're a nationalist, right? So you're upstanding and you're gonna dial nine-one-one on your cell phone and get to the local nine-one of the location, local, local nine-one-one near the location where you are. And you're gonna call for a supervisor. Hey, yeah, I need you to meet me at the corner of East Bumbafuck and, and West. Get, get these insane idiots that work for you off my back lane. Right? And yeah, uh, cuz I think they need some help with an emergency. My land conveyance isn't on fire and I didn't call them, but obviously he needs help with something. Maybe there's a bruised jelly doughnut at Seven-Eleven, you know? Because that's the kind of mindset we gotta have because we have been programmed to be fearful when that happens. And how we need to do is get Becky on the line, like, hey, Becky, how are you? Yeah, we got, we got an emergency here, blah, 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 blah. Yeah, can we get a sergeant out here or whoever lieutenant on duty is? I appreciate you so much. Yeah, it's Big Ten Four, Becky. Yeah, all right, I'm laters. You know what I mean? Be, because what you're, or you can keep her on the line. You know why you keep Becky on the line in the nine-one-one call? Just in case Officer Doof and Schmorts gets, gets, gets acting like an idiot. Because you can put in a Freedom of Information request and request the transcript, cuz that's where court started.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Are we gonna talk about, I mean, maybe not today, but at some point, are we gonna talk about how to file suit?
I, I think, uh, Sister Leah is on the chat and she's been mentioning some information as it relates to that. If you're there, please do share, Sister Leah.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, um, well, I can't answer the question of filing the suit. But I've, I've just had response, I was responding to the court of what I was going through. But it was nothing big. Um, but, you know, right now, everyone, I, I can only talk about like, uh, everyone's doing, you know, charge offs and, you know, they're trying to, you know, have financial freedom, but we know that, you know, there's no, there's no money, you know? Um, I think people, um, I'll just say that, um, I think, I, I, I think, uh, has everyone went to college or had financial aid or, uh, took any, uh, school loans or anything?
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, of course I was twenty-something and not knowing I was supposed to charge off and they said it on the promissory note. But who's, I mean, who reads the promissory note at twenty? So, um, so, and then coming into this, you know, knowledge and understanding that you're supposed to charge off and do all these things. But, but when it gets down to the, getting to the court because you didn't take care of your business, then it turns into, now they put a lien on you. Now you gotta learn how to respond. Uh, you don't go to prison, but they'll attack your job. They will do things where you're gonna have to respond to the, go down to the city clerk and do all of these things. So the only thing that I did was I just responded with the affidavit of dismissal because there's no money. I don't owe you anything. But some people don't know that. And, um, uh, documents have to be, uh, what's the word? What's the word? Uh, oh, man. It's so crazy. You read all this all day long. When you get into a conversation, you don't remember a damn thing. Excuse my French.
What attacking you or the corporation?
Um, oh, no, when you, you know, Reginald, when you, when, when we were talking about the affidavit of dismissal, but notary, woo, okay, here we go. So any document that you have, you get ready to, uh, present to the, uh, clerk. You go to the, you know, and, um, you need to make sure that you have everything notarized. But it is a little interesting though. I know jurisdiction is, is very important because when you get some. Because when you get something notarized within the corporation, and some people might not, I guess, if you haven't put your status on notice, but you can still clear your case properly, even if you haven't changed your status, because you still responded properly. Um, it's kinda like, you see people getting out of prison, but they didn't, uh, they didn't claim their nationality, if that makes sense, cuz I, I've been paying attention to certain things, how people are clearing themselves, but without nationality. But, but we're talking about finances, so this, I'm just, you know, if, if you're ha- if you're dealing with court, um, uh, that's the only thing that I can say for right now, because I am learning how to respond to uh, um, oh, how to say it, um, I can't think right now. But, um, but the, but what I am doing is, uh, you know, doing an affidavit of dismissal and um, and then also to deal with uh, when you, when you have debt. Um, it takes, it's a long process, but a lot of things came off my credit because I did a charge off, but it takes a long time. So.
Or you, in fact, you get asked, were you ever in debt? And who, who were they attacking? Were they attacking the natural person or the corporation straw man?
Right, because I responded. And that's the thing about a lot of us, we're responding to things that have nothing to do with us. But you have to know that you have a nationality, but we're, you know, a lot of us, a lot of people don't wanna hear about the nationality, but they're responding to black. They're responding to, you know, you know, so I don't know. That's all that I could say, is, is us putting life to things that are dead.
Hmm, I'll, the, the question was what to do on court. I heard the good sister's response. Uh, I think Brother Ronnie said, uh, Mother Leah. So with that being said, my question is, which court level are you entertaining? Federal, which is district?
Not. It's just a Ninth Circuit Court. It's just a kangaroo court. So, so, so no, I'm not, I'm not even gonna deal, like, I, yeah, I can move it to federal court, but, but the fact that if I can respond in a way I'm supposed to respond in federal court, these judges, they don't want me coming in there because then either, either I may end up putting you out of business, because then I need to speak to the bailiff, cuz I'm gonna let you know who I am before we even get into this process. Either you just gonna dismiss it. So that's why I say, is ready to go ahead and file it. And if they don't respond to me, then that means that, okay, you know, but I want them to respond, but they're not going to.
Well, with what you're saying, Mother Leah, and what the sister asked, I would say with what you presented and what was asked, I would say to do, good sister, when you ask what to do as far as court, I would say the mo- what's motivating or pushing the protocol in which Mother Leah is using. I think to me, I think to me, you asked a question. Leah gave her example, right? The example that Mother Leah is given is fueled by knowing the uh, the, the uh, objective. When you play Monopoly, you know the objective, you know why you're collecting two hundred when you pass go. So in court terms, that's called usually the rules of procedure. Of course, on the federal level is the federal rules of civil procedure and the local rules. So when you know the rules of procedure and the local rules, check the state of corporation or the state republics. Uh, see if you can find a list of their court procedures and court rules. And you'll see, they'll have municipal level rules and it's like, okay, well, this is how you play municipal court. And then you go, you go circuit, oh, this is how you play circuit court. And you got federal, which is district, and which is the federal rules of civil procedure along with the local rules. Everybody's got local rules. That's like, okay, look at it like this. Knowing the federal rules of civil procedure is knowing that when you lay down a draw four, whoever you, whoever's after you, pick up a draw four on the Uno table. But local rules, some motherfuckers pile on, some people don't play pile.
Exactly.
You see what I'm saying? You can't pile on colors, only numbers. You see what I'm saying? So, it's the same thing in those court systems. If you know the rules pertaining to procedure, you have nothing to fear. And you're national, you're using the Constitution, and you know the rules of procedure, shit.
And no debt anyway.
You see what I'm saying? However, some people like to play WWE though. We know it's, we know it's fake wrestling. We know when they hit the head on a turnbuckle, they not hitting the head on a turnbuckle. Some people though, like the mother said, hey, I, I know it's kangaroo court, but obviously she likes punching kangaroos. No, I'm serious. And there's some wars out here that will do that and learn it. And that doesn't mean it's wrong, because these are tools that we're using, cuz in the future, she can be able to use that, knowing that experience, and do something else in other areas when courts no longer exist in that fashion, that aren't courts. They're just meeting rooms. And it's like, okay, so this is how we're doing knuckle fighting? Okay, well, and according to your rules, I can lick my fist and dip it in the glass and punch you in the jaw. Damn, how'd she know that, man? That was, that's what we supposed to be doing. How'd she know how to lick her fist and dip it in glass and punch me in the face? You know what? We ain't gonna fight her.
You already know what's up. You know how to deal with them.
She know the rules. And that's it. Alright, I yield.
Cuz you, you, and basically you never wasn't dead in the first place. You never wasn't dead. So how they can be coming at you? And also, you know, in Correcting Position of RV Bay, they say a debt is not fit, not paid by giving a note. Nolan Company versus Marin Cash.
And you know what?
Right.
Cuz you can write a letter. You can avoid court by holding court through the mail. You can have settlement. You can have settlement. I was just entertaining what the sister said. I'm glad you did that cuz I didn't wanna keep going. Um, but I'm glad you did that cuz in transition, this how we was taking care of it in twenty sixteen. If anything was showing up on anybody's credit report, right? And there was a collection agency. That means that, that was famous for Sprint. So Sprint done sold your debt. Sprint, Sprint don't care about you cuz somebody else done took care of it. So now this third-party interloper is like, hey, Reginald, what's up, man? How you been? Oh, man, I'm good, man. I recognize this number who this is. Yeah, this is the collection agency on behalf of Sprint. And I need you to uh, see, what you gonna, we gonna have our bread, man. And you got click. So what you gotta do now is write, find out who that CEO is. Write them a letter, and your letter is simply gonna say, hey, can you produce the original contract so I can make sure it's you that I owe? They'll never be able to produce it. And since they can't produce it, hey, man, stop fucking calling me. Great. Now you, you know, check out Equifax, TransUnion, and Experian. And you send letters to those CEOs. Hey, man, take this shit off my credit report. Hey, man, take this shit off my credit report. Hey, man, take this shit off my, my credit report. Islam, peace and love. Like, you know what I'm saying? It's all the kind of, but um, that's really it. That's it. That's what Brother Reginald was saying. Okay, you don't wanna take it to court, then hold court through the mail. How do you do that? Uh, you aim for the head and watch the body drop. In other words, you write to the CEOs of the people in charge.
Yep, that always.
To add on to what, uh, what we're, we're, uh, where we at presently, uh, I think in our last meeting, Brother Reggie, we uh, kinda touched on the Clearfield Doctrine.
Oh, yeah.
Would actually uh, just clearly states that, that there is no, there is no funds, there is no money. And because that is, uh, it's a fraud from the jump, how can you ask me for something that's not real?
Um, no, no lawful money in circulation. The only thing, gold and so, gold and silver coins can be secure in debt. Cuz the Federal Reserve notes, there's a debt obligation of the United States federal government. Are you the federal government?
Facts indeed.
Ain't my stuff. It's not mine. Federal Reserve notes, not yours.
Islamism.
That's all you do, like nobody's really see, force that Constitution. That's why you implemented, forced the Constitution.
Did you wanna touch on this one, uh, Brother Leah? Do you wanna save it to the next one?
We can say, yeah, time, my barrier. Barrier run a little bit low. Yeah, we save that for the next time. Over, sorry. Both excel at, tax at.
That's, that's a bet, man. I guess we can close out. This, this was uh, productive, if I think, I think, uh, you know, we uh, kinda went in and uh, touched on, touched on the information properly, um. Um, but if, if we're ready to close out, we can do that. Brother Reggie, again, this, this was your presentation today and we got the next one as well.
Thanks for having me, Ronnie. Taking, temporarily taking his spot.
Nah, man, nah, man, we, we're doing, we're doing this together along with, uh, you know, the, the two sisters that, that I discussed with you and um, I think we should do a little bit of shop, uh, talk after we're, before we completely shut down. Um, but uh, I thank everybody for uh, showing up, uh. Again, ain't nobody to, ain't, ain't nobody king knowledge on here, man. We, we are, we're, we're, we're growing and learning this together and adding on and touching on all the, all at the same time, you dig? And um, um, I really, I really appreciate this. I'm glad that we're, we're able to, to do this. And um, I'm looking forward to it, it growing. We, we, we can really make this uh, something that's uh, an outlet for our, our people, for our nation. And, you know, continue pushing in the right direction. Islam, and I yield the floor. If anybody else wanna add on and touch on or say anything, feel free to floor yours.
I just wanna say, Islam, uh, peace and love. I just thank you again, Brother Ronnie, um, just for the classes and getting grouped together, um, you know, just being able to study with Brother Son and then to come and study with you. And for people who don't know as much, and for those who do know, have been acting just to see the beauty of the different concepts and come together so that everybody can get like a foundation, so everybody know how, knows how to move properly, you know? And uh, I just appreciate it, man, and I'm just locked in with y'all. Peace and love, and I yield the floor.
Appreciate that, brother. Um, make sure you uh, send me your, your email so I can add you to the actual uh, list, YouTube, uh, Brother Benjamin and anybody else who may have gotten a invite. And uh, it wasn't a direct invite, it's, ain't no biggie on that. Um, but yet still, I'm glad that you were able to make it. And uh, Islam, I yield the floor. Anybody else wanted to add on or touch on or say anything, go yours.
Thank you for the invite, Brother Ron. We did, we, we did in class late. We didn't end to like seven something. It was on, it was on me, man. I went in a little extra or whatever, but as soon as we got out, man, I sent the emails out, so we thank you for that.
That's cool, that's cool. I appreciate you.
Islam. And I promise I won't interrupt as much uh, next in two weeks, Brother Reginald. I don't want you to think like I was trying, it's just, boy, I swear, when I can feel that spirit going, man, it's like, nah, it's okay, you can say this in back of the brother, but I, you know, I wasn't trying to make y'all run out of time either, man. I was, you know, you know me, Brother Ronnie. I can still go another two hours on this topic.
Yeah, the live, the live that we did uh, the other day, the impromptu, I think we ended up with four hours plus on that.
Man, and that felt like we was just getting started.
Really?
Yeah, seriously.
For anybody who wants to check that out, I, I believe the links are in the chat. Send out the uh, the, the recording. Uh, you'll have, act, you should be able to have access to those as well. And um, again, I yield, anybody wants to add on or say anything, feel free to floor yours. Alright, well, uh, this is another study session for more in a minute, Marketing and Consulting Solutions. That's M A U R. Um, that's the High Priest and not our new. Uh, we are reattaching ourselves and reclaiming that which is ours. And uh, pushing on with these divine principles of true peace, freedom, and justice, those five points of light. Uh, Islam, thank you everyone for being a part, sharing your energy, sharing your time. And uh, supreme honors to the mothers, big honors to Prophet Wudra Ali. And uh, we gone, Insha Allah.
Islam, peace and love.
Brother Reggie and uh, Sister Tinesia, please stay on. I'm gonna stop the recording.
Will do.